Standing. For a moment of silence for Mr. Nick Pallidi, who died. He served thirty-six years on our planning commission. And for Ms. Mary Casemar, mother of Mr. Ron Glassick, mother-in-law. Uh, have- have a moment of silence for those two individuals.
I.
Planning commission to the back of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do it.
Thank you. Have a seat. Moving on to roll call.
Ronald Knuff.
Present.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Alman.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Alderman will be absent. Jason Donahue.
Present.
Mason Smolenech.
Here.
Judy Kutzler.
Here.
There we are. And Mayor Anthony Prestash.
Present.
Did I miss anybody?
I don't know. Check it out. I think you got everybody.
Yeah, I got everybody.
Thank you. Consider request for permission to advertise ordinance twelve thirty-six. Oh, I always forget about persons present. Would anybody like to say anything? I'm sorry about that, Mr. Lipsansky.
Anthony S. Lipsansky, Newport Avenue in the borough of North Hampton. Uh, I don't know if there are any plans in the future, but I wish there would be. At the diner in the hill, southbound, right by the traffic island and the diner, there is one very nice, a whoop, that you hit going down. And it does, does cause problems and it could cause damage to vehicles, because I know it messed my hair up when I hit it the last time. So if we can put that on the, on the book just-
Is that a pothole you're talking about?
I don't know if it's a pothole or a ground, or to, like, work was done and then the pipe, the ground sank. I don't, I don't know what it was, but there's something that's there that's not ordinary.
Thank you.
I'll have Rich take a look at it.
Yes, alright. And my other question, I was speaking with the chief and he, uh, gave me the information that I required about the borough hiring for police officers. Because there's one police offer, officer that just had retired today. And that takes the force down a little bit. But it's an officer who is very hard to replace. Then he had a lot of, a lot of tricks in his bag. And he had a lot of magic in his fingers. He could do a lot of things. So I hope that we can find someone to at least come close to replacing him, to bringing back the enthusiasm and drive to the police department. And I yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
You want to ask about the bathrooms?
Uh, no, I... If I can rent one, I could be great.
I got just the thing you're looking for.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, now, item number five on the agenda. Consider request for permission to advertise ordinance twelve thirty-six.
Ordinance number twelve thirty-six authorizes the borough to recover reasonable cost for the use of emergency rescue tools, equipment, and materials, as well as personal costs associated with any hazardous material, environmental, fire safety, or rescue incident or operation. Uh, the ordinance was prepared by our solicitor.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Alman. Any questions?
Question about the cost, um, I guess of the, the solicitor. Were these reviewed on the prices being current, or?
The tables were, um, prepared by Mr. Knoblock and I reviewed them and found them consistent with other accounts.
Okay, good. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of Citronia Fire Department.
Citronia Fire Department is requesting the use of the portable van trailer on August twenty-fourth from twelve P M until five P M for their one hundred, hundredth anniversary open house event. They will be charged a three hundred dollar rental fee, a hundred and fifty dollar delivery and setup fee, and will be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured. They have been informed that the door has been removed. They did not ask anything about a portable toilet.
Thank you for taking care of that.
I make a motion. I make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Knuff. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hall. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the request of Becky's Drive-In.
Becky's Drive-In is requesting the use of the portable van trailer on October sixth for their thirty-sixth annual benefit festival and car show to benefit Dream Come True of the Blue Ridge Chapter. They will be charged a three hundred dollar rental fee, a hundred and fifty dollar delivery and setup fee, and will be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
What is the, uh, opinion of council?
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Stone?
Second.
And Mr. Glassick. Anybody questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the request of Saint Paul's United Church of Christ.
Saint Paul's United Church of Christ will be holding their annual community trunk or treat on Saturday, October twenty-seventh from one to four P M. They are located at Nineteenth and Lincoln Avenue and are requesting a temporary street closure of one block portion from Ridge Alley to Lincoln Avenue on that date. Uh, they have done this in the past and we have not had any issues.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Knuff.
Second.
By Mr. Donahue. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Epstein.
The ayes have it. Moving on to reports from Committees, Administration, and Finance. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. We received Service Electric's quarterly franchise fee in the amount of five thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Curator Ed Penny reports that over the last weekend, the museum was host to forty visitors during the pass, during the Passport to History Weekend. One of the visitors was Co- Carol Willis, Director of the Skyscraper Museum in New York. Another visitor was a graduate of Yale University and a professor of economics at New York University. Ed Penny and Sally Ann Madden also presented the Atlas Music, an Atlas program to the senior high school, to the senior, North Hampton Senior Center at Gray's U C C. And the position for Assistant Borough Manager was posted internally. All applications due by Friday, August second. End of report.
Thank you. Building Land and Recreation, Mr. Knuff, would you be able to read that for us, please?
Alrighty. The last day for the pool will be Saturday, August seventeenth. Progress continues on the Butterfly Gardens out Canal Street Park. They should be completed within the next few weeks. I was with the mayor this week at the fourth one that they're building. And I checked it out again today. I put the stone down. It looks very good. A meeting is scheduled on August fourteenth with Cindy Miles' Adoptive Fund and the Building Land and Recu- Recreation Committee. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Code and Police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the planning commission will meet on August fourteenth at seven P M to hear a presentation from Horwith Leasing Company Incorporated for a sketch plan review for a possible storage unit facility along Horwith Drive. The zoning hearing board will meet on Thursday, August eighth to hear the appeal of Y R C Real Estate L L C to sub, uh, subdivide the parcel and construct a two-story building with two three-bedroom apartments. End of report.
Thank you. Fire and Health, Ms. Alman.
Thank you. The Fireman's Parade was a great success. Thank you to all the fire departments that participated in this annual event. Mr. Brooks, Brian Wellsco, Keith Knoblock, and David Strain met with Tracy Charis of the Volunteer Financing Services Incorporated to discuss the financing options for the new fire vehicle. We have worked with her on two previous purchases for the fire department. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. A big shout-out to the Public Works Department for helping with the three Butterfly Gardens at the canal, and now that there's a fourth one on the, on its way. Uh, some of the paving projects are scheduled to begin in the near future, and several streets are being looked at. We're gonna be looking to even do a council approval or put a bid out for approval to get an ex- external service company to look at those streets, including Barrington, which has, what you would say, Mr. Lipsansky, a whoop.
Yes.
I think that's what you use.
Several.
Uh, several of those, okay? So we're trying to look at the right way, uh, making sure that we do it this time once and for all to fix it properly. Um, also, enclosed in the packet is a memo from Tom Duffy at Gilmore Associates in regards to the work being done on the various pump stations and treatment plants for our sewer projects. End of report.
Thank you. Reports from council members. We'll start with Mr. Hall.
I don't have a report.
No report. Mr. Stone.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I was thinking since the, there is no more waiving the fees for the portable van trailers, is that something that's necessary to be on the agenda to vote on renting this out? I mean, is it, is it necessary to do that? I mean, if we're, if we're not waiving any fees-
Uh, once we're taking it out of town, I think it's good to have the insurance coverage and, and we have a note that, you know, in the minutes that it, where it's going and why.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, and I'm glad to hear that Barrington, um, is on the schedule to be, uh, done later this year. End of report.
Thank you. Um, I can't even get Nineteenth Street paved.
You gotta know the right people.
What's the issue, your partner?
You gotta know the right people.
Oh.
I'll have my people contact your people.
Thank you. I'm telling. And yours is a new street. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Knuff.
Alright, I have a question for the solicitor or Leroy. Why do our parks have different ordinance numbers on their signages?
Wow. That's impressive.
That's an interesting question. I would think that that might have to do with, um, dates of enactment, perhaps, and dates that the, that the, uh, ordinance was, ordinances were posted. But since that's a signage question, I have to refer to Leroy.
The only rea- the only rational reason I could think of is that, uh, the municipal park was there when I was a kid. And if there was a sign up, it had a, in reference to an ordinance, do this, don't do that. Canal Street came along much later. And there may have been a new ordinance passed subsequently to the first one, and the one in municipal was not changed, and the one that's posted at Canal Street might be the newer version.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know if that's a fact or not, but-
I thought maybe it was each ward with something different.
No, no. I'll take a look at it.
And that's, that's kind of what I was saying too, that, you know, it was a factor of time, but, um, ultimately, if one of the signs refers to an older ordinance and somebody goes to look for that ordinance, they'll be referred to the newer ordinance.
Yeah.
And also, with the, uh, football going on on Canal Street Park, the parking is crazy right there along the fences. Would you, would it be possible to put a caution, children at play sign while football practice is going on? Because people are ducking in and out in their cars and you're driving past.
I'm trying to think if we don't have a playground, uh, one of those, it doesn't say, you know, children at play. It's, it's a silhouette of a-
Right.
Kid kicking a ball or something.
Right.
I'll take a look.
End of report.
Thank you.
Because that's just an information sign. We don't need an ordinance for that.
Correct. Thank you. That's right. Thank you. Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. A few things. It's hard to believe that today's August first and they say when you hit August, summer's usually over. But then we're voting on things for October already for trick or treat trunk. So it's hard to believe that, but I guess here we are, August first. Um, talking to, just to elaborate a little bit on the streets and the bumps and things like that, uh, working with, uh, the supervisor, manager, Rich Ackerman, we're looking to do a couple of different things. So that'll be on the agenda. I cannot say that it's gonna be done by the end of this year, but we are looking to at least make the progress with an external company because we would have to tie up our own labor, uh, for probably a couple of weeks, and that's if nothing else happens besides the cost of using our equipment and trying to pave it. So we're gonna look to do an external thing. So that's what we're gonna try to propose to the next council. Um, I guess this is to the police chief. Uh, what's our current count of officers?
Sixteen.
And what are we, what's our goal? If I, I thought we had a goal of like eighteen or twelve.
We're budgeted for eighteen.
That's what I thought, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, let's see. Uh, just a question about the checks from, uh, like, the I E. checks that we got from Service Electric and things like that. Are they earmarked for anything in particular, or do they go into a slush fund, or do they go for the playgrounds when we get those rebate checks?
General fund.
So the slush fund.
Yep, yep. It can be used for anything in the budget. Anything in this book.
Okay.
Oh, not sewer, but-
Question, I guess, to Mr. Stone in his report. What is a storage unit? Big word for uni- a warehouse?
Excuse me?
It said storage unit from, that you read in your report.
Storage unit?
Horwith?
No, store wi- no.
The Hori- Horwith. Proposal?
Yes, a storage unit, yes. Right.
Storage units like shelters to put stuff in, not a warehouse?
Won't be a warehouse.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify what that was and make sure that we're not putting a warehouse out there, or try to put a warehouse out there. So, that's clear.
Yes.
And I do believe that the public works are doing a great job. I've asked them over the last couple meetings that I've had with Rich and the supervisors and the other managers to make sure that we get a list of all our, basically scrap metal equipment that's sitting behind our public works building that's not operable, not to use, and let's scrap metal it, put it towards what you would call your general fund, or at least maybe the playgrounds or something to make sure that we can move forward and clean up that public works area. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glassick.
Yeah.
Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. Uh, as Mr. Lipsansky said, Mr. Dennis, Officer Smith retired. I'd like to wish him a nice retirement and thank you for his service he did in the borough. Uh, he was a very nice guy when I had a few run-ins, not run-ins with him, but met him in the distance. Yeah, right, right. Yes, exactly.
I got my truck in it, eh?
Uh, but, uh, so I'm having my report. Thank you.
Ms. Alman. I would also like to wish Dennis Smith a very happy retirement and thank him for his service here in our, our borough. And that is the end of my report.
Can you elaborate on your civil service? I saw you had a posting.
We have, the advertisement is now posted for new police officers. So if anyone interested out there, please come and pick up your application.
Okay. You'll be tested. Do you have any idea when you'll be tested?
We don't have that date set yet, that I know.
The cutoff for the applications is August-
The cutoff for your applications is August nineteenth. Expect a week or two delay till we get the number of applicants to the testing company.
Okay.
And then we can sell the written test and agility on the same day.
Thank you.
Question, did we move the, I guess the thing about test, uh, not testing, but like licenses or classes that they had to take, was that been rectified? That we don't have to do? Okay, so we're good on that then too. Gives you enough more opportunity for better oper- uh, applications.
Yes, and, and while I had your attention, I've also researched and found out there is, uh, state reimbursement, partial, uh, possibly-
How could you leave that out?
Was that?
How could you leave that out?
I just found out.
Okay. Reimbursements are good.
There is reimbursement for the academy, uh, tuition, and also the salary of the officer while he's in there.
Fantastic, thank you. Good news.
Mason?
Um, at this moment, I have nothing to report.
Well, make something up. What are all those packets in my office?
I was gonna touch on the next meeting, but those are essentially the photos. I've been trying to reunite people essentially with their photos that they've been using for the Hometown Heroes banner, many of which are originals.
So you're trying to get them back to their rightful owners, right?
Yep, a lot of calls.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, happy birthday, Leroy Brobst, along with your upcoming retirement. It's a great day to celebrate and I wish you many, many more. And happy retirement to Denny Smith. Uh, I know, as a new mayor, Denny was essential in helping me to learn more about law enforcement and the ins and outs of the force, uh, along with Chief Kadingo and all the officers, but he will be missed. Uh, his experience, as Mr. Lipsansky mentioned, uh, is rare to find, and I hope we can, uh, get at least one, two people to fill his spot, uh, sooner than later, so. He will be missed, congratulations, uh, happy retirement, Denny. I had the honor of, two weeks ago, attending the Pennsylvania State Mayors Association meeting in Johnstown. It is more of the, uh, how the sausage is made kind of meeting among strictly mayors. Uh, Johnstown, of course, has a rich history, uh, not all of it tragic. Uh, while the flood is the big issue, uh, I don't know if you know, but Johnstown had the first steel mill in the state of Pennsylvania. Okay, and of course they suffered through some rough times, uh, looks like nineteen seventies Bethlehem, but the interesting thing about the city itself, which was ripe for information for me, was how they're recovering from being the highest unemployment rate in the state of Pennsylvania for years after the steel mills closed. The mayor, Frank Janikovich, and I had a lot of conversations about their, uh, the financial, uh, streams of income that they use from the federal government, from the state, uh, local, to rebuild the city and to really make it the vibrant place it is now. They have a AAA team, they have a hockey team, it is now an outdoor destination after they cleaned up the Orange River from the s- uh, steel mills. But it is a city coming back, and I saw a lot of parallels to things that we've gone through here in Northampton. And it was a great trip from that standpoint, where the information was coming in, and I just had to sit back, listen, and take it in. Uh, we had guest visits from Lieutenant Governor Davis, uh, State Attorney General Henry, and Speaker of the House, McClinton, who is also a very good friend of our representative Zach Mako and speaks very highly of Zach. So, well, I have three new best friends, who are all invited to the Cement Museum and to visit Northampton, uh, at their convenience, and hopefully we'll get them in town here, but again, uh, one thing I do want to point out is, when I was in the meetings for the roundtables, we are doing so well as a small borough, and I want to pass that on to you uh, from the standpoint that we don't have a tenth of the problems or obstacles to overcome that so many of smaller towns have. Our police force, our fire department, our public works, we are solid compared to other places around, and that's a testament to our borough manager, to our president of council, and to all you councilmen and women here to keep things moving forward as we are, to watch the budget, and to make sure that we are properly funded for the safety of the town and for, uh, the building of the community. We have great parks, we have great departments here that work together as a community, as friends, as family, and I'm, I'm proud to have represented Northampton in that respect. So let's keep it going, a- and again, my compliments to everyone here for the community spirit that you exude for everybody here in Northampton. You are truly building a better Northampton, so thank you for that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stone? Anything? No?
I'm good.
Okay.
Nice book.
Nothing else, Mr. Hall? Okay, and Ms. Attorney Stewart?
Yes, thank you. Um, council, in front of your, your places, you will find a packet of ordinances, um, that are either exist, that are existing ordinance and one, existing ordinances and one draft ordinance prepared by my office, all of them related to the regulation of conduct in public spaces, um, for council to review, so that should there be an interest in any amendments or further ordinances, we can move forward with that process. Um, so they're just provided for your review at this point. If you have any questions for me about anything in that packet, please let me know. Oh. Congratulations to Denny Smith, who I've known for years on his retirement, and, um, best wishes, and of course, happy birthday to Leroy. End of report.
I think Leroy should have had a cake.
Yeah, at least, at least.
Uh, since I've been on council, there's, every year since twenty sixteen, there's been issues with the park. Everything from loud music to littering, mortaring, the whole bit, so I'm happy that Attorney Stewart has, uh, really worked on this. And we can get down, I had talked to a councilman in the last few days, and maybe in September, October, we put a panel together and work and try to organize. Go over all of this, don't, you know, we'll look at it and you'll go, oh, okay, but let's, let's dive into it and see what we can do. Yeah, a year or two, three years ago, uh, Mr. Lipsansky, Ms. Almond, and I put together a plan, uh, for the park. It basically fell on deaf ears, but we have a new council now. And, um, Mr. Donahue can attest, we have constantly worked at trying, so let's get it, we'll think September, October, these quality of life issues, let's, let's tackle them and let's try to do something, whether we fail or not, but at least try. Thank you, Attorney Stewart, for your work. And now, we'll move on to announcements, uh, by Mr. Brobst.
Well, I had the, uh, opportunity and the honor to do the paperwork for Dennis Smith's, uh, retirement. Actually, I did mine before I did his, so his is the last one that I will work on. Uh, his wife and he were in, uh, and everything was, was straightened out. They seemed to be happy when they left. And, uh, I'd like to wish him well as he goes on. Uh, I really don't have anything else. Thank you all for your birthday wishes.
Yeah, I know. I'm wondering if she'll come when you're not here.
Sure.
Did you bring that case back?
Leroy, can we cut you in half to count the reasons you have enough handles?
Well, I don't know, you, as long as you got seventy-eight, because you got one to draw on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, one, one other thing. Um, just to let you know that the average, well, last meeting on July twentieth, we had a hundred and eighty-four people viewed the uh, website or the live streaming, and that's probably averaging about a hundred and twenty-five more people per meeting than we had a year ago, so I think it's still working that people are getting information and at least viewing what's going on in our borough. The blinding light is just something else right now, but-
The good Lord shining on you.
I better be brighter than that then.
Have to start somewhere wrong.
Okay. Moving on to, we, we need approval to pay the bills.
What paper? I don't have it. Would you, would you smoke it?
Yep, probably. Yeah, approval to pay the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second motion made by Mr. Glassick, second by Mr. Knopf. Any questions?
Did not get a chance to review it, so no, there is no question.
If you have any, give me a call.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I need a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Hall.
No one answers?
He said no.
I did that, my right.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, meaning this month.